What's up y'all?
We live on there?
Yeah.
Alright, I can't tell them, it's not telling me if it's live. But if we are, welcome everybody. Can you check just cause it's safer life? It is?
Yep.
Beautiful.
What's up man? So uh, what happened today was, we planned on um, on uh, doing a Zoom call. For our interview today with Glenn Carlson.
Well, cuz the weather man.
The weather people. What the hell was that all about? I don't know, look, I guess they got the timing mixed up or whatever. And I did see on the news, they were explaining like, why is this so hard to predict accurately? Or whatever, you know what I'm saying? They were like, there was something shocking up with this storm. So like, you heard one person say it was five inches, and then the other person said five feet.
I'm still waiting for the five feet.
I won't.
I'm not gonna be happy unless we get five feet.
I think they're gonna get five feet in the mountain.
Yeah, that's true, I guess.
I don't want five feet.
Experience five feet. So anyway, we had set up a Zoom call with Glenn.
Yeah.
And we're all sitting around, like getting our Zoom stuff ready, and then who walks into the Chinook Center this morning? But Glenn Carlson.
Glenn Carlson, he's like, hey guys, we're natives, we don't play that shit.
Which I do appreciate, like, when it snows, I'm like, come on guys, we gotta go out this time.
Yeah. I have no problem coming out, I'd rather do it in person anyways.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Been doing so much Zoom lately, it's like, just good to be in front of people again.
Right, yeah, I'm looking forward to it, I'm looking forward to everybody getting their shots and getting together, especially by April man. We got a lot of stuff this summer coming up for the community. The June 10th festival, this is gonna be the first ever three day festival that we had in the spring ever that's ever been happening, you know what I'm saying? And it's like gonna be a real festival, you know what I'm saying? It's not gonna be like, you know what I'm saying, we just named that, but it's really not, it's gonna be a real festival.
There was a Bouncy Castle last year.
There was a Bouncy Castle festival, yeah, I remember, you know, and there was like a couple of different pieces doing stuff.
One kid at a time?
Yeah, we did have that. Bouncy Houses with lions in them, yeah. So anyway, I'm looking forward to not having to do all that. We have Pike Peak Park Community Barbecue. Speaking of bounce houses, there's this dude, I can't think of his name right now, I just met him on Facebook, he's in the Green Soul just said he has a business, where he makes bounce houses, he's from the south side. But he got a movie screen on the side of him, bro.
That's a great idea.
I was like, oh, yeah, I need you to come here, so he said, hey, he's down for us, so let me see. I don't know the name of the business or whatever, it just happened every day, so.
I mean, I imagine he's probably watching. So if everybody watches.
Yeah, should be, anyway, but nah, yeah, hopefully he is, but um, yeah man, so the Pike Peak Park Community Barbecue, the 24th of April, man.
And shortly thereafter, May Day.
May Day, like the next weekend, it's going down, son. It's going down.
Exactly. Alright, so let's, let's get going on our discussion with Glenn. We appreciate you stopping by, taking the time. It's always the young ones, I feel like. I think uh, Richard Skorman has been the oldest person that we've interviewed, I guess, I mean, I don't know how old Philon is.
Yeah.
To be perfectly honest, but honestly, the young folks are like, we're gonna get down with that.
I don't know, well, Jim Mason, he's retired after all this.
I guess that's true, maybe what I'm saying is complete BS actually.
It kinda depends, I mean, I, you know, from just running in a campaign and stuff like that, there's a lot of people that are simply unwilling to meet with groups they don't align with, which is unfortunate.
Yeah.
Right, not even willing to have the conversation, which I think is a failure, honestly.
Geislinger.
Geislinger, man.
Looking at you, Geislinger.
Yeah, there's a lot of that going on, I just talked about that on my social media, matter of fact, like, you know, if you don't agree with a situation or a topic or whatnot, and just cut off the whole conversation, dude, you are the problem. You know what I'm saying, like, you could guarantee that you're probably the reason why this stuff.
And you know, here's the thing, we're like, Sean and I's politics are not a secret.
Right.
They're out there pretty, pretty wide.
Pretty blunt.
Yeah, we're pretty blunt about it, but, I don't know, when we've interviewed people in the past, nobody has been like, these people didn't give me a fair shake. You know, like, we'll push back on stuff that we're even, think is important to us, but, you know, we don't align with most politicians in Colorado Springs.
Right, it's like, none of them is like, that's my guys, that I don't have to deal with.
It's very different when you're behind a keyboard too, compared to sitting down and having to interact face to face with somebody.
That's true too, yeah.
You know, I'm not gonna sit here and insult you, or vice versa, like people do on the internet.
Cuz we're bigger than.
You can go and not, that is definitely true.
No, yeah, that's true, you know, that, that's a good, that's a good point too, cuz um, you know, I didn't agree with a lot of the stuff that Jim Mason said, a lot of it that he said I didn't agree with, but it was like, you know, we just kinda just saying, you know, and it wasn't, the thing with this, with this here, we want the people to hear what y'all are talking about and what you guys got to say, and you know, like, of course, we gotta say, we gotta chime in, you know what I'm saying? But really, the point of it is like, so that the people can understand who you are and hear your voice before they see your name on the ballot. Cuz before, it's never been that way, like, you don't know who these people are, who this city council is.
Well, really, our goal too is, cuz we see ourselves as sort of like more grassroots and sort of, not entirely south side focused, but that is like a big part of our focus, and people who don't traditionally vote in um, city elections, you know, they're not getting a lot of the, they're not watching the candidate forms and stuff like this, but people watch our show, I think, that necessarily always, like, haven't historically necessarily always voted in these elections, so.
Sure.
We want people to get to know the candidates that maybe weren't getting to know them before.
Right, yeah, and another thing is like, after the election is over, you know, only one person is gonna win, so all the rest of these people that were interested in, you know, being a part of the city government, they can, they know that there's people here that they can connect with or whatever, and continue to do the work that they wanna do, you know, that they weren't elected to get to, but you know, there's things that you can still get done or whatnot, so. It's a good thing to know that, you know, the real people in the community and the real ones that are into the people in the community, so.
True story.
Yeah, man, so anyway, why are you running Glenn? What are you running for? What, what?
So I'm running for uh, City Council District One, which is the northwest part of town. Basically uh, Air Force Academy to Fillmore.
Okay.
And then the mountains to more or less Academy.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, so it's a big chunk, it just got extended a little further east. So uh, there are now people that are in District One that were not, you know, just two months ago.
Right.
So that's something to pay attention to, um, if you're, if anybody is curious to know what district you're in, um, you can go to the voting tab on my website, I've got a link where you plug in your address and it shows you exactly where you're at.
We'll add that in the comments.
I'm just telling you guys right now, I know that Rita watches every week, Rita, you're in District One.
Yeah, Miss Rita?
Same with my mom.
We can't see the comments though, man. Maybe we should pull the, oh yeah, you can, my bad, my bad, my bad.
So um, you know, I was just, just talking about, you know, you guys have a big south side presence, obviously. I, although I live in the northwest part of town, I grew up down south, grew up in Widefield, born and raised, started a scholarship down there, even after, long after I left the region.
Oh, okay.
You know, funded by myself, um, just cuz I wanted to help out the kids in my district, with the district group. And so, you know, I, you know, fast forward, uh, I went to Maysbridge High School, Colorado College, stayed in town, and then um, commuted to Denver for, you know, almost a decade, and actually worked for Colorado's largest company, managing several hundred million dollars of revenue, so I, a very, very high uh, you know, high impact, high anxiety type job up there.
Yeah.
My commute got brutal, uh, really wanted to get back home anyways. Um, so kinda toward the end of that, um, my wife and I started a business, a massage therapy business, she's a therapist. Um, and you know, fast forward, eight years later from that, and now we've got, you know, twenty something employees and a few locations in town. And that, that's, that's our focus now, is that. I've also got an e-commerce tour rental business, so um, I'll spare you the ugly details, so I've kinda thrown into it by accident, but uh.
You said e-commerce?
It's an e-commerce uh, automotive tour rental business, so, so like, if you're, if you're doing high-end uh, repairs on, on like Porsches and Ferraris and Lamborghinis, things like that, a lot of those tool kits are very expensive, so.
Yeah.
I ship, I ship tools all over the continent every week.
Oh, nice, man.
So it's a, it's a really.
You know, I saw this guy that uh, did that with Teslas, man. Like, he goes to all the junkyards and like gathers up all the crashed Teslas and all of the little pieces, I guess it's like, you can't buy them.
They had a lockdown on them.
Yeah, so he's like, how about this, I'm about to go get it myself, and he puts it all in the bin, and people order it, so anyway, that's what it felt like. But yeah, they got all kind of specialty like stuff for the engine that people can't, can't buy all that school, man.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think just, you know, being a native, there's a big piece of that, um, I grew up here, single mom, had a lot of help from people in the community, um, just passionate about Colorado Springs, what, what it has afforded, afforded me. And I've always kinda viewed it as, you know, kinda borrowing from future generations, so I have a responsibility to make sure that I leave it better than I found it. So that's the basic premise of why I'm running. It sure as heck ain't for the money, we know City Council doesn't make anything, and I've got, I'm gonna business to take care of elsewhere. Um, and so I wanna, I wanna leave my, you know, leave my impacts. You know, being a business owner is a big piece of that, having businesses in other districts actually. Um, I care what happens to the east part of town, I care what happens in the northwest part of town, the south part of town, downtown corridor, et cetera. And so, especially coming out of the pandemic, being a business owner, having our business closed down, going through unemployment, triple P and grants and all that messy stuff, um, you know, I feel like I could be a champion for a lot of the small businesses that have just been hammered out there. So that's another big piece of it, especially considering just right now at this moment in time, you know, maybe you call it a calling, if you will.
So was it COVID that got you to run specifically?
No.
Or was there some specific thing you're like, ah, I gotta run this time?
No, it, no, it kinda goes back to the first point of just caring number one about the community. I ran at large in 2015. And there was thirteen of us running for uh, realistically two seats at that time. So, and I finished um, I finished fourth or fifth, if I remember right, so, pretty close. But I knew the minute that I did not win that time, that I wanted to run again, and it was just gonna be a matter of, when's the right time to do it?
That's cool, man, so you, you ran for District One back then too?
No, so I ran for an at-large seat.
Oh, at-large, you said that, okay, sorry, yeah.
So that, they represent citywide.
So what do you, like, why do you think people should elect you then? Like, over, you know, it's a crowded field this year, so why you specifically, what are you gonna?
It is, you know, something that I've really just thought very deeply about the past couple weeks, is what, what the city, and what the, what the various communities inside of the city need at this time. Right, twenty years ago, when we were just so heavily Department of Defense, private contractors, you want the kind of retired military experience to kind of have some leadership positions in your city. But now, our economy is diversifying a little bit, we're drawing younger crowds in, although not as effective as I think we could be. Colorado Springs is growing, it's becoming more diverse in different ways. And so I think right now, what we really need on City Council is somebody that understands the modern economy. You know, people our age, what it's like having to, you know, to be in your thirties, your twenties, your thirties, or the forties. Um, running a small business, and I just don't think we can have, you know, a City Council comprised of mostly retired people.
Yeah, it's pretty much all retired military, even.
Right.
It is, and look, I don't, that is not a detriment, at all, I mean, bless those people's souls, they did voluntary time, I didn't do that, you know, so I value that, hundred percent. So I'm, I'm, I never approach it from a detract, you know, a kind of detracting way, of, oh, they're all retired military. It's more about, who are the other groups that need to be represented on City Council?
Yeah.
Who are the other folks that need a face that understands what they're going through? And I, I come back to small business, but ninety percent of the uh, of the businesses in town are small businesses. Ninety percent of our employers, though we see the Amazons and we see the Lockheads and those guys, ninety percent of our employment in the city is small business. And so I think we need somebody that could focus on that. So that's one part of the platform.
I mean, you're arguing your thirties, is that?
Thirty-seven.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I agree, I, I think that there's just like this, we need more perspectives on City Council.
Yeah.
Way too much perspective of like the retired military, but it's not even retired military, it's like retired military officers.
Yeah, exactly, I was getting to that, like, it's not even like, you know, the retired, so are majors in there, or like, you know, enlisted dudes or whatever, it's all, you know, you had the conservative type.
Especially your master.
Of course, well, I mean, if you look at, um, if you look at, um, you know, those four of us running, and two of them are retired military, right? And again, bless their soul, I've never talked negatively about that yet ever, both of those guys have had long careers, they've served beautifully. But uh, it's just a matter of what I really think we need at this time.
Right. So you know, uh, we had Jim Mason on, on a couple of weeks ago.
Great guy, love Jim.
Yeah, he's a good dude, and um, you know, again, he was retired, I retired after, after army too, so we had a couple of um, things in common during our conversation, um, I didn't agree about any of the stuff that he had, the police and all that, like, it was a whole bunch of things, I don't agree with his conservative viewpoints on stuff that I don't agree with, but he did, one of the things that John and I both were like, okay, he was talking about the, yeah, he was talking about transportation. Public transportation, and um, being able to, the same thing, you know, like, thinking about the way that this economy is gonna, or this, you know, yeah, economy is gonna grow and into the future, and then like, attracting younger people, the same thing that you just said. So, you guys kind of are on the same vibe, it feels like, but um, so like, what, what makes you different from the other people? Maybe not just him, but just the other candidate, cuz that, it's a fool, it's a fool's slate for District.
For sure, yeah, so I mean, if I look at, you know, I think the biggest thing, I just come back to, I come back to small business, and I've got other points, but let me just,
Okay.
Let me just hammer this home for you guys, a little bit further, but, you know, when you, when you run a small business, you wake up in the morning and whatever seeds you go plant, is what you get, what you get to pick later on. I don't get to count on the check every month, whether or not I'm doing anything or not.
Right.
And I'm not saying that's not earned, but it's a very different perspective, and we've got a lot of, a lot of younger folks, um, a lot of uh, you know, mid-career young professionals, and a lot of small business owners, that are kinda wondering like, what, and you know, you know, we've had, had triple P help and things like that, but now what? We're still under restrictions a little bit, and you know, who, who can I talk to? Who can I, I'm having problems with this, is there anybody on City Council that understands that?
Right.
Probably not. And I don't care if it's taxation.
Richard Skorman.
Richard, right, yeah.
He's a small business, long time small business.
Long time, exactly, Richard's had a business book written here since the seventies, I believe, so. Yeah, but, our economy and our workforce, especially with the technology nowadays, it's changed dramatically, and COVID accelerated all that, big time. And now we go into remote learning, and Zoom, and having to operate, you know, more digitally than we've ever had to. And so I think you need somebody that understands that, and understands, you know, why it's important to go to a lower socio-economic community and make sure they have internet.
I would, definitely, I think that the US should just be focusing on that as a priority. Like, the electrification that we did back in the thirties, I think we need to be doing that broadband.
It's a, I mean, internet is, internet's a check the box, right? If you don't have internet access, you are, you are behind the curve, and you are at a detriment.
I mean, that's why they had that tutoring service started here, because not every kid has access to internet, we had Wi-Fi here that people could use. So what specifically, you keep talking about small business, we talked about, you know, Richard Skorman, but like, what's specific, like, can you just get a little bit more into the specifics of your policies, just so people know?
Yeah, so, there's really kinda two pieces that, that I think I can do some, some valuing. One of them um, is obviously being a champion for the business community, someone that understands what they're going through and how to communicate, and how you can go change things at the city, county, state level, right? Because the reality is, City Council needs to work well across the, across the aisle and across different jurisdictions, county, state, et cetera. Um, so you need, you need a champion, you need someone that understands it, and then there's the kind of legislative side, right? Zoning is a big piece of that. Um, our zoning, uh, our, our kind of master zoning, master zoning plan, if you will, hasn't been widely updated since the early eighties. So there's a lot of regulations in there that are just, just path that needs to be trimmed away, they don't apply to the modern economy, it don't make sense, they don't allow for flexibility for startups in certain areas, and if you look at the, you know, I'll take retail, for example, where retail has been hammered, we've got ghost towns in town. And due to strict zoning codes, there's only certain kinds of businesses that can go in there. And so you need a little bit of form of thinking to say, hey, how can we reimagine this? Like, I'll take the Citadel, for example, or Rustic Hills, or um.
I mean, so much of Academy at this point.
So much of South Academy, right? You need somebody that can go in and say, hey, these zoning codes don't make sense, we need to work on changing them, and attracting new businesses to go into those areas and invest in those areas. So, I mean, zoning, um, code of building permits and regulations, all that can be looked at and streamlined. Um, taxation, obviously, I mean, you can, you can go very deep into that, well.
Right, so what are your thoughts on the ritual costs?
I think it's.
Right now, the process.
I think it's much needed, it's much needed, um, it's very complex, there's a lot of different stakeholders at the table. You know, you've got government, you've got private entities, city, county, landowners, developers. And so it's important to a lot of different groups, and uh, um, I think it's important that you have diverse voices at that table that can speak to how the future of zoning in the city is gonna look.
So are you in favor of denser residential?
So, I mean, infill is, depending on who you're talking to, infill and density is either a nasty word or a blessing in disguise most of the time. I'm, I'm a fan of responsible infill, and I've seen, you know, being a native, I've seen it done poorly, and I've seen it done correct. If you take a look at uh, University Village, for example, with the Costco and the Lowe's and that, like, it's a great project. It's a great shopping center, it's a, it's a, you know, a major network, major artery in that area, done correctly. Um, I've got a project in my district, twenty-four twenty-four Garden of Gods, not sure if you guys have seen that or not. But it's, it's right in Mount Shadows, Mount Shadows has its own master plan that's been, you know, agreed to for a long time, and they're trying to come in and file like four hundred something apartments. Yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't fit, the neighborhood is adamantly opposed to it, there's traffic concerns, wildlife disturbance, um, evacuation concerns, so that's an example of infill intensity that probably isn't done properly. So my answer is.
Single, single-family neighborhoods always oppose higher density.
They do, of course, and you're always gonna have.
They even burn them down in, in a room with gloves.
Yeah, and you're always, you're always gonna have the not-in-my-backyard people, right? Uh, I've walked my dog in that field for ten years, and now you're gonna put her department there?
Right.
And usually you just get over it.
Yeah, I mean, I grew up in uh, Garden of the Gods, and I was so upset when they said they were building University Park or whatever that was, you know, that neighborhood up in the bluffs.
Right.
You know, I was like, oh man, that's where I played as a kid.
Yeah.
I mean, they just put more wealthy homes up there, so it does, they didn't, it's not like it was a affordable housing for anybody, right?
Yeah, but I think it's gotta be done with respect to the particular neighborhood or area that you're, that you're, you know, trying to infill or densify.
Yeah, so um, I, I've heard of business, 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 I haven't heard anything about worker, 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 workers. What's up with the workers, man?
Yeah.
What's your, what's your viewpoint on this thing and how the workers make all of this stuff happen? Because I, you know, from my point of view, there's no such thing as a small business if the first thing they're talking about isn't the worker, right?
Hundred percent.
Um, where is that?
None of, none of, none of us small businesses exist without our, our employees. You know, and you learn a lot when you have, when your staff kinda grows a little bit about people. Um, you have to have compassion and understanding, and the ability to work with people at different points in their lives, right? And of course, maybe this is like more of a, more of like employee employer relations, but um, um, it, it's just, it really, I think, comes down to compassion for people at the end of the day. And, and like I said, willing to understand what people are going through, and trying to make sure that you're able to pay the best wages you can while still operating your business, cuz there is a balance there. I mean, trust me, I would love to pay people as much as possible, but if the business is not there, then none of those people have jobs there. So, you know, it's a, it's a balance, always. Um, but yeah, it's uh, you know, especially going through COVID and stuff like that, um, I think there's, I think the CARES Act has helped out tremendously. Um, you see the new stimulus that was just approved, unemployment benefits were just extended a little bit longer. Uh, there's arguments on both sides of that aisle, for sure. But, it's hard when you have restrictions still, but expect people to go make their normal wage. And so, we have to safely reopen the economy, get through COVID, get through the vaccinations, and get through that before we can unlock the potential of getting people back to work.
Yeah, so, as far as like you're, just say you wanted a seat, right? And you're in the seat, I would like, how do, where's your thought frame on how workers are making this thing happen? Or is it even a thought for you, like, you know, I, I feel that um, business owners and people that, that uh, that lean forward on business, lean forward on business and not on what's making their business run, right? And so if you're in the seat, how, that's, you know, I understand that, you know, that there might not be anybody on City Council right now that can relate to business owners and things that they know all of these things that you laid out, right? But, right now, there's no one on City Council that, that relates to the worker either. So, if the, if the business owner doesn't relate to them, then where, where, where are we at, you know what I'm saying? So like, I feel like there needs to lead, you gotta lean forward with speaking about how these people are like, cuz you, you want them to vote for you, you know what I mean?
Sure.
There's far more workers than there are small businesses.
Right, so like, how do you make that formation for the people? Cuz I, like you said, I don't know how many percentage of the, you know what the percentage is of uh, people that own a small business? I know that ninety percent of our business is small business, but probably thirty or twenty percent of them run that, you know what I'm saying? Or whatever that, that pop, that uh, that uh, percentage might be. So anyway, you know what I mean, where, where, where is that sitting with you?
No, look, I, let me, let me, let me, let me uh, let me just point out a different side of that too, right? Yes, of course, as a business owner, you focus on your business, it's your baby, right? And you, you live and die with that business every single day. And the misconception that business owners are all millionaires, and they're just killing it, and they're doing it on the backs of their employees, is one hundred percent not true. We have bad actors in the system, no doubt about it, there are people that operate that way, they're out to make all the profit they can, and that's, that's the start, right? But the majority of small business owners, they're grinding, they're in there, they're working with people every single day, and they're right alongside of their employees. So it's, it's not kind of, I'm here and all you guys are here, right?
I'm just messing with the sound, you can keep talking about that.
I could just get in complaints about this.
Folks can't hear us all.
Is it, do I need to talk?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, I'll talk to them.
They're a little suctioned, I guess.
Yeah.
It's alright.
Um, so, you know, and I think uh, it, it, as far as small business goes, it takes a long time to become an overnight success. A long time, and a lot of hard work, and that goes for people in general.
Yeah.
You know, most of us were not born into wealthy families, uh, I'm not, I'm talking about just as a human at this point. You know, most humans are not born into wealth, um, or anything like that, and so, um, you know, it's consistent, hard work and repetition, and good decision-making, that kind of allows you to, to get ahead in America, most of the time.
Well.
Most of the time.
Sometimes, yes. I'm not gonna get into that too much.
Yeah, I know, I, I know.
Ideology in there, yeah. Um, so what do you think the District One's biggest challenges are? What do you see?
I think it's gonna be probably, probably responsible growth, I mean, the district itself is not, um, it's got really nowhere to kind of grow, like the east side of town, for example, nowhere to expand out to. Everything is gonna be infill and densification. And so I think doing that responsibly and keeping the kind of western feel and the views and things like that are important as well. Um, I'm on the, I'm the president of the board for the Trails and Open Space Coalition, so.
Okay.
Another piece, uh, you know, aside from business that I advocate for here in town is, is preservation, protection, creation of our parks, trails, and open spaces.
Okay.
Which is a big deal to most residents here, most, everybody uses them in one form or another, almost every week.
Yeah.
Right, and so I wanna make sure that those spaces are preserved, and, you know, we've got trails and bike paths and open spaces and places to go recreate and get outside and, you know, heal yourself mentally and physically.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's definitely an important part of Colorado Springs.
Right, if you, for us down here, we're like, yeah, that's a good idea, bro, to the parks and all, yeah, we need that. But you know, um, have you been endorsed, or are you, are you endorsed by any of these developer companies, or?
No.
None of that stuff that's going on?
No, no, so I, I'm not, I'm not endorsed by any of them, nor have I received any money from them.
Well, and so the point I was wanting to get at too, with like the uh, um, the trails and open space, right? That costs money. And like, that's the one thing Colorado Springs folks will give money to, it seems like.
Yeah.
I live by Monument Valley Park, it's, it's potentially a great park.
Yeah.
But it's not a great park, because the, the city has money that they put in to buy more and more and more parkland and open space, and then they don't put that same money into preserving parks. And so, parks just go to shit, like, let's be real, we know that there are parks all over the city, that the, the city has just decided they don't really care about anymore.
Right.
So, they're not giving the money to the parks, and part of it is because they're deciding where else to put the money. And our issue that we've been pushing for, you know, the past six months at least, is like, well, the police department doesn't even have a third of the budget of the city, plus they're getting the public safety sales tax, plus they're getting uh, you know, grants from the federal government, so on and so forth. So if you get into the City Council, how do you deal with that, that limited budget, right? Do we keep feeding the beast of the police department, or where do you, where do you say, okay, we need to cut money from here to put money uh, into these priorities, right? So what are your priorities?
Yeah, great question, it's stuff that I've worked on for many years already. Um, I think the, the singular answer is. Yeah, great question. It's stuff that I've worked on for many years already. Um I think the, the singular answer is that we have not, we do not have a stable, long-term parks funding program in Colorado Springs. Currently, it's done very piecemeal. So we've got, you know, uh the city has its parks budget, which is stuck at two thousand seven levels. The county has its parks budget, which is smaller than the city, if I remember correctly. Um then we've got various programs like TOPS, which is a sales tax. And then we have um citizen-driven initiatives like POPS, which is a separate fee. And then we've got Parkland Ded- Dedication ordinance, BLDO, um which was just reduced unfortunately. Um and so we have all these little buckets of money, all require different administrative tasks. BLDO, for example, most of that money gets gets sucked up in maintenance and not towards the development of uh of new parks and the maintenance or current ones. Um and it was never intended to be a parks funding mechanism anyways. So suffice to say, all that means, one of my, one of my big goals on City Council is to get all the stakeholders in the room and say, how do we figure out a long-term, stable parks funding program? And that's, that's really, you know, kind of the gist of it, instead of piecemealing it.
Right, so, but the reality is that there, you know, some parts of the budget, you're gonna have to prioritize, prioritize, right? Or I guess keep asking for more and more tax money. But Colorado Springs already has some of the highest sales tax in the country.
Right.
Which is out, you know, we're so anti-tax supposedly in Colorado Springs, but we have really high sales tax, which is essentially a regressive tax, you know? The, the sales tax weighs heaviest on the poorest woke uh in the economy, right? We don't have like really a progressive tax here in Colorado Springs, the fun things that we need in Colorado Springs. So how do you decide where that money is gonna come from?
Yeah, I think the one, I think one thing that we've kind of noticed, and especially in recent years, is had a little bit of shift away from we hate all things tax. So thankfully, we've kind of gone in a different direction. Um you know, we're kind of getting away from the Doug Bruce years where everything was just, we hate tax.
I mean, we gonna get rid of Taylor?
I don't know. Chip away at it. Um but, but, you know, specific to like parks tax, for example, um, it's something that I think if you're transparent about and you show exactly what money is coming in and and you're able to show the results from it, then people are favorable for it. You know, s- the stormwater, two C, all of those programs were fairly robust. They were fairly transparent and people overwhelmingly supported them. And they've been effective. Our roads have improved dramatically over the past, you know, several years since. There's still work to be done, done there always. Stormwater is a big deal as well. Uh but to kind of back onto your other point, um you know, I grew up down south. I can tell you the parks down there do not receive a portion of the attention that the parks in my neighborhood do. So I think um, I think Yolanda has been a champion for this. She has fought for the South, you know, the minute she's been on council. Prior to that, honestly. And I love efforts like that and and it's, I want more equitable solutions as far as that goes, more development in our area.
Yeah, you know, um so we, yeah, one, I think the District One, I read something in the things in southeast, I think District One has the densest population of cops living in it or something like that. Maybe we had, we got in some trouble with District One. But anyway, um, you know, to get though, to, you know, obviously, something that that mattered to us down here or it, yeah, I guess you could say that like in these, in different districts, things matter differently and way differently, right? Um but you, you know, you you mentioned that you you got businesses in other districts and we all, if you know, uh even Jim Mason, he said this and we all understand that. You know, District Four isn't doing well, then that means District One isn't doing as well, and District Three isn't doing well, and District Four isn't doing well, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, um and again, you know, I I I think I've made clear that I'm like about the worker and about the people and understanding that the people in government have to recognize that and and pull whatever they're doing from that and not try to tell us or tell the the people, hey, this is the problem and this is what we need to have and you gotta listen to them, right? So we've, and the reason I learned this by dealing with with Niski and Southers and uh even, even the, a lot of the city council members, you know?
Yeah.
Um they don't believe us. They they don't listen and say, oh shit, that's, oh, I believe that, it's happening. No, it's not, it's like, well, they think this is happening, but really this is what's really happening. You know, like, we know better than this or whatnot.
Niski literally dismissed the notion that black men would know whether or not they're being treated differently by the white cops.
Yeah.
Literally like face.
Like, right to that balance, that substance, that not, it's not, it's not a thing.
Yeah.
So uh we're, and again, we're coming to Niski now, but so, you know, Bill with with City Council, the, the City Council is really our only like way to get to that, that level of government, right? And if they don't believe what's happening and then the, the Niski, which we believe he he doesn't believe what's happening or doesn't wanna hear what's happening, you got like, the City Council is the only thing in between those two things to make in this city combust, right? So, one, do you, I'm, I'm, you lived here, you're from here, so you knew about the, the, the uprising that came here from Devon Bay being murdered a couple of years ago and then the uprising last summer. Um you, how do you feel about Niski specifically, the, the police chief and then Southers and their, their, their uh, their ability to to or that they displayed to listen to us and to to have their policy um a shift in, you know, whatever they're doing to what we're asking or what the city govern- or what the city council is asking. How do you, how do you feel about that? Have you seen that or do you?
That's a good question. Um let me just start by saying. You're good. There's many answers in there too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um let me first start by saying that there is no more important voice than just simply a citizen who stands up and speaks and comes together with their community and works up that food chain, right?
Yeah.
Um you know, and and perhaps it starts with your city council member or somebody on your school board or a county commissioner. And you, you've got to, you know, and Obama was so good at community organizing long before he was ever in, 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 in talks of presidency or anything like that. He was in the community and he got those people to get involved and make issues known and work with those people to make sure that they were kind of going up the food chain to, to their community leaders to make sure real change happened.
Yeah.
Um so that's kind of one piece of it. You gotta stay vocal and active, period. Um I can't, you can't expect people to just kind of know there's a problem here, especially when, hey, I gotta go fix roads. That's what I'm focused on right now, you know? That may exist, but I don't know about it. Help me. So that's a big piece of it, is going uphill. The second piece of that is is kind of a top-down initiative as well. And you need diverse viewpoints in your city government. Um and so you need uh, you know, people from all different races, sexes, genders, all that. You need all those people to represent its residents in the government as well.
Yeah.
Uh so that's an important piece of it. The third piece is that real lasting change takes time. It takes time and effort and consistency.
Why do you believe that?
Well, I mean, look at, the Emancipation Proclamation was signed in eighteen sixty-three, right? Black people still didn't really get full rights to vote until the Voting Rights Act in nineteen sixty-five. And even then, it's still suppressed, right?
Right.
So you're talking a hundred years where, hey, on paper, you guys are not slaves anymore. You don't deserve any other rights. So, you know, and it's all those little nuances.
But is that a good thing? I mean.
That's what I'm saying is it's not a good thing, but it requires, it requires time to happen.
It took time for that to like, you, you, I believe that good government doesn't take, like, good government goes now, like, right now, there's a problem and they stop it, you know? So you brought up the, of the prime example. We've been waiting and waiting for government, waiting and waiting for government, waiting and waiting for government. So you know, that's why I asked, why do you believe that it takes time for good policy to blow, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't understand it, cause Jill Gable thinks that too.
Right.
So enough, I, I don't, I don't agree with that.
It's, it's really because there, there are people that have opposing views as well, right? How I feel about, about assimilation and diversification on, in our city and having people of all races and colors, et cetera, active in our government and active in our communities. There's also people that believe the exact opposite. They believe, they like the status quo. They like how it looks right now, plain vanilla, right? And so um you have opposing forces and for real lasting change, you have to go head to head and and work at it. And look, I don't, I don't like the fact that it takes a long time, but you know, when you're talking about something as large as a city government or a national government, it's a big machine. It's complex.
Right. I mean, I just, I go back to your example though, like the proclamation, uh Emancipation Proclamation was signed and the reason it didn't get implemented for generations, and maybe I'm taking this, you know, too literally, um was because, yes, the status quo was in a position of power that they didn't wanna give up and they were actively harming people like that. To me, that's not acceptable. Like, if, if it takes a long time because the people in position of power don't wanna give a little bit of power.
It's not okay.
That's, that's why things take a long time. And I guess I just wanted to get back to Sean's point about Niski and the, the mayor. Cause that, Niski and the mayor keep saying, you know, like, this is stuff we care about, blah, 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 blah. But they don't seem to be um moving on anything. I mean, they created LITAC and that, and that's a good question we can ask next. Like, what are your thoughts on that? Like, do you think that LITAC is? I mean, I guess just what are your thoughts on it? I don't wanna eat you too much.
No, you're good. I mean.
And, and Niski and Southers and the way that they responded to like the.
Yeah, look, I think you guys, um you know, my, my portrayal of Mayor Southers and and Miss, I don't know a ton about Niski. I don't know him personally, but still, um but my, my portrayal is that they're, they're very uh non-confrontational guys. And perhaps not willing to just jump into that battle.
I agree. I mean, I agree with you on that, cause they have the, they have the privilege to not be uncomfortable. I was just thinking about that this morning. Southers is definitely not a Trump character, for sure.
But, but look, let me, uh, look, let me give you, I'm looking at Tony's picture right now, which I love that painting, Tony Exum, right? He's, he works at our state level. He's been ingrained in our community for a long time. He's done a tremendous amount of work. So is Pete Lee, for example, and they're, they're good friends, so I always, I always put them together, but. Um you know, and so they know the causes they wanna go advocate for. They have the expertise, they, they, they have the experience. So they're gonna be a voice for you. They're gonna be a resource for you, right?
Yeah.
Um if I, if I grew up in the Hamptons, I just moved to Colorado Springs and I want, I have a ton of money in my account so I can fund my campaign and I wanna get on City Council. Do you think I'm gonna be representative of you guys? Probably not. Am I gonna be representative of the South? Probably not. Am I gonna be representative of African Americans? Probably not. So you have to have perspective. Which, which goes back to my other point is not only perspective, but diverse voices involved in your city government. And it takes time. There are commissions out there and different boards where you can have an impact. It's not always go to the top, stroke of a pen, we're done with this. It just doesn't work that way.
Right, right. We, yeah, I, I, well, we know that for sure, but um, I, you know, I, I, we also know that it really is literally like a struggle of pen most of the time, you know what I'm saying? Like, all it is is somebody saying, oh, that's the right thing and whatever, and it just can happen. Um a lot of the times.
Especially in our form of government, right?
Right, especially with this, with this guy, that one person is in charge and he runs the whole, the whole city, you know? So anyway, um I, you know, I, I just hope that you would like, kind of, you know, as you go forward with this, cause it seems like you have a good chance of this thing, man. Like uh to in, in a really like, put that in the, in the thought, in the, into your action, because the people, the people are the, the, one way or another, you're, you'll have to see them. You know what I'm saying? Like, either you're gonna be successful with them or when it's not working, they're gonna come and see you. Especially the way that the city's going now, you know, so I just would, I, I don't know. It feels like that you, I don't know if you really wanna talk about Niski and, and Southers or not, which is fine, you know, I, I, we, I, you don't have to, but um, you know, I, I think that uh that the, you know, this one, the centrally, you know, focusing on only your district is, isn't a thing anymore, you know, like.
No, you can't. Yeah, you gotta, no. You represent, even though I'm running for district, I represent the city.
Right.
Everybody in the city.
Yeah.
I grew up down south, right? I care about down south. I'm gonna work with Yolanda like crazy.
Yeah.
To make sure that that's, that opportunity down here is just the same as in Barking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's important.
Cool.
But, but my point is like, you know, when you have deep-seated thoughts and, and sometimes they're not even malicious, right? And I'm gonna come to racism, because the worst kind of racism is racism that you don't even know you're doing. You just, maybe you're misinformed. Maybe you um are kind of a product of your environment. Maybe your dad just spoke that way when you were young and even though you fully grasp it.
Yeah.
The worst kind is when you're doing it without knowing. And the reason is because it's done like this. It's at scale. Right? And so that has a huge impact in how humans and how we function and live together. And so that, that, you know, you have to just kind of, just break the armor away constantly, you know? Oh, I'm old. I always wanna break down barriers, always.
Okay. So do you support the Law Enforcement Transparency and Accountability Commission?
I do.
What are your thoughts on it? Do you think it's gonna be an effective tool to actually hold police accountable?
I think that's TBD. I think it's TBD. Um I think it's a good first step. I'm a fan of checks and balances everywhere, especially in large complex systems. I don't care if that's, you know, checks and balances on businesses, city government, county government, national government, the police force, um take a pick. So now we have a, a commission that's been uh tasked to kind of oversee and take a look at certain things, which wasn't there before. So I think it's a good first step. I'm curious to see, are we gonna get good information out of that? Are we gonna get um, you know, kind of actionable intelligence, if you will, from that commission?
I mean, it was designed not to be that.
People that they put on there what, what.
And the design too, the, the original conception of it was to have more than a, like, an, you kind of audit or, like, they have a, a number.
Yeah.
Where they can actually do their own, like, citizens can bring complaints, do their own investigations, they have all that access. Southers and Niski pushed really hard against anything like that. It would actually have teeth, right? Then they can't get in and like audit the police department themselves. All the information they get comes from the police department, whatever they wanna share with them, right?
In the form that they wanna share with them, like, you know, like, in the context that they wanna share, everything is like, here, you can really use, you know what I mean? So.
And they can make recommendations, but they can't.
Right.
Force them, which is the case pretty much for, for all oversight, but.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, I understand where you guys are going and, and I think the commission's probably, probably a decent first step. But it's something that we're gonna have to continue to work on.
Yeah.
To provide accountability.
Well, let's say you are elected, right? So one of the, it is under the city council. This is a city council commission.
They have that scope.
And let's say that they, they bring forward something that says, you know, the police are behaving horribly.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you imagine fixing things as city council with the, cause you know, this.
You know.
The city council doesn't control the police. The only thing the city council controls is the budget, right? You'd have to convince Niski and the mayor um to do something or withhold budget, like, what would you be willing to do?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, I think you have to have people in leadership positions willing to listen. And if Chief Niski is not willing to listen and really kind of take a, an unbiased position and really take action when needed, you know, if he's in that position and he's, he's gonna be adamantly opposed to everything you suggest and, and that speaks volumes about that person in that position and how it might be a failure.
I agree.
Right?
I agree.
Um and so I think the hope is that you, the best thing you can do always is just get around the table like this and have people talk and share experiences and try to work peacefully to change people's minds and show them other sides of the coin that they don't see.
Mayor Southers never wants to do that with us.
Yeah, he never wants to sit with us. He'll sit, he'll pick the people that he sits with though. That's cool. Hey, man, no, that, you know, I, I gotta say that that might have been the most direct que- answer to that question.
Right, true. Most people avoid it.
The, all the way around. So yeah, like, yeah, man, I, I appreciate that to an extent, you know, I, I think that um, you know, for me, and I know that like you're a complete different person than I am, right? And like, everybody is, we're, it's completely different from each other. But for me, um it, it's important to be abundantly clear on exactly like what, who I am and what I'm gonna be, right? So if I, I, what I, what I'm deciphering from what you're saying is, I'll sit, I'm gonna sit with them and make them see the light to what, you know, make them see where they're wrong or whatnot. And um, the thing is, we know that they're, that's not like, that's just the first step, right?
Yep.
And then they're gonna ignore you. And then we know that at the, there's a, gonna come a step where you're gonna have to come to the people to, and say, hey, I did, I'm trying over here. I need y'all to come and do this, you know what I'm saying? And then like, for the first time that a city council member does it in the open, well, I, you know, like, for real does it in the open. I think, what's the guy's name? Um Bill Murray. He gets on Facebook and he'll like, put out all the business and say. Right, but they won't say, but they won't say, hey, come here, all of y'all, come over here. You know what I'm saying? They won't call for the people to come and, and tear that shit, or not tear it, but you know, like, yeah, you know what I'm saying? Like, the things that we do and say, we never tour City Council. We come in with our signs.
Just to be clear.
And do our thing, you know, and we don't plan on ever doing that, but I'm saying that, that was a bad choice of word, but like, but they'll, to call and say, hey, I need help with this thing. I'm trying to get it done, you know? So, and I'm not asking you to say, yeah, I'll be that guy, you know what I mean? But. But I feel like that's the people that we need there in every district, and we need advocates for the people. Because no matter what you do, you could be wrong as hell right here today, and you could be wrong as hell when you get elected, but if you just come to the people, you could get it fixed, right? That's what's fast, you know what I'm saying? It's funny, the government gotta go slow, but the people can make that shit happen right now. So, you know, I, you know, as you go along, you know, I think that, that's gonna have to be the way, you know, it's definitely gonna be the way that's coming from the south side, you know what I mean? Yeah, man, so, what, what are your thoughts on, on the, the protest happening this summer? And how they were handling things, the city, you know? We saw the stuff on January sixth, you know, with the kid gloves, and then we see, we were here on the, uh, for the curfew, and, I mean, we were facing. Machine guns and shit, right here downtown, so, what's your feelings on that?
Yeah, I mean, the, the stuff that happened at the Capitol, that was absolutely ridiculous. There's so much misinformation and hate that fueled that whole event, and it's disgusting. Um, I, I, I think, you know, peaceful protests, and I look at Dr. Keen as a perfect example of somebody that leads, leads perfectly, if you will. But I think, I think making your voice known, being vocal about it, and doing it in the right ways is very important. Um, I do not think getting violent, I don't, is ever an answer.
Are you giving it up for the cops, too?
Uh, absolutely, anybody. No, a hundred percent. I don't think getting violent is the answer, I don't think destroying our city is the answer as well. Ever, ever.
So, what are your thoughts on the, you know, there's a demonstration at, um, Allen Van Land's house, the cop that shot Devon Bailey in the back. And they charged, they're, they charged people felony riots. There was, there was literally no violence that occurred at that demonstration. The police never even declared an unlawful assembly. What are your thoughts on that?
Uh, I, I actually did not know those details.
Yeah, people got charged, well, the police actually said, they said, you need to keep moving, uh, and then they, they thanked the protesters. Thank you. They never declared an illegal assembly, then a month and a half later, they charged three people with several different felonies.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I did not, I did not know that, honestly. And I'm not trying to dodge the question whatsoever. You know, the, the other part of that is, um, you know, were those people on the internet trying to incite violence or threaten that person? I don't know, were they? Do you guys know?
No, it's just a demonstration in the cop's house, you know, that's been, become much more common, um, we were, I mean, I guess, people know we were there. We were there, there was no. Yeah, there were, you know, guns on both sides, but nobody even raised a gun at anybody.
There was no felonious activity, there, I mean, um.
Compared to like, for example, like, January sixth riot.
Some, some of the charges were like, they'd see the video, and like, there was a type of weapon that they saw, and things like of this nature, you know, like, it wasn't like, you know, you punched this person and burned his house up. And you don't gotta comment on, I believe that's what the hell he deserved, and damn it, it's not okay, it's still not all right, my friend. But, though, that didn't happen there, you know what I'm saying? Um, and, so, anyway, yeah, my bad, I, I was reading some of these comments, and, you know, uh, Chauncey said that, uh, that the city council needs to, to work more with the county commissioners, um, what, what, what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, yeah, I, I would agree a hundred percent. Yeah, for sure. Uh, it's, the county has a big, a big impact on the entire region, right? Everything from, from housing to, um, to the DMV, to the county health department, to the workforce programs. And so, yeah, I think they should, absolutely.
Well, Skorman actually talked about this during a city, uh, Colorado Springs city county, like, they have, have a Denver. I mean, what are your thoughts on that? Cause he was like, that'd be a lot more efficient.
Well, it, you know, it's interesting, there's, there are people that are gonna battle, battling on this all day long, but, uh, there are different groups trying to work towards the same result. What happens?
Same geographic area.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent, right? And so, most of the time when you have that, you know, you do a decent job here, you do a decent job here, maybe a decent job here, but then nobody does a good job, right? And so, yeah, I think there is an opportunity, you know, for the city and the county and the state to partner, do workforce training, to do business accelerator classes, uh, to do, you know, to help the start of the community. Uh, the county and the city parks department should work a lot closer together. So, so that, there, there's always an opportunity to work more closely.
Well, speaking of which, actually, so, you know, the not doing things well, one of the things Colorado Springs has, which is bizarre for a city like this, is, El Paso County has the most school districts in it, in the state. Would you support a consolidated school district for Colorado Springs? Cause you know, we have a district, just in the city of Colorado Springs, we have District Two, District Eleven, District Twenty, District Twelve, and then I guess parts of District Forty-nine are also within the city.
And their parents are of the active foods who are forty-nine.
Well, I, I think the more you divide, I can understand both sides of that coin. Number one, um, I believe there are communities and certain areas that could and should maybe be operated a little bit differently than other areas. But as far as education goes, I'm a huge, huge supporter of public education. And so, I think, uh, I think the districts should work closer together, or turn the number of school districts, uh, to, to make it uniform.
Yeah, I mean, District Two and District Eleven get, you know, very little funding, they're always having to ask for bill levies, and District Twelve and District Twenty are. You know, and the students are doing better too, as a result.
Yeah, so there is definitely disparity between different districts, even though they're trying to.
Yeah, so you're saying just kill, kill, like, kill some districts off?
Well, I don't, I don't know, I can have so many school districts. We have a lot of sprawl, and I think that contributes to needing, needing or wanting to set up different districts, school districts.
Well, and people wanting to protect their. To call the money to go to their.
So, I think, I think, I mean, you know, let's look at it from a business standpoint, I think there's opportunity for improvement by consolidating some of the, well, a lot of it's repetitive. A lot of it's highly repetitive, and so, you're, you're wasting tax money every day, I, I'm gonna set up my district over here, I'm gonna run my school system like this. We got laptops, but not you guys. I know you guys don't have internet down in your area, but we do, so we're good, right? So, why, why do you get to sit on your phone and say, we're good up there, I don't know what you guys are doing, you know, me too, sorry. Shouldn't, it shouldn't work like that. But there's a, like I said earlier, when, when you have, you, you know, opposing forces, there are people that are trying to kill public education every day. And so, real meaningful change takes time. I don't like it any more than you guys do. But it's real.
Well, you know, yeah, I agree, I, I think that when it comes to schooling and, and, you know, like, alternative ways to educate our kids, um, that if, there, there are community, there's organizations here, that, that are all over the city that will do it if they have the resources and the fund to do it, right? So, um, instead of the district, like, oh, this, we'll do it, we got it all under control, with, and not only that, but you can't have any of this money to do anything with those kids over there, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like, again, going to the people and saying, hey, we need help with this, you know what I'm saying? Where the programs at that we can, you know, like, boost up and things like that. That's something that the gov, that, that don't need to take time, like, it's just somebody finding it and, and zero.
And I'll give you, I'll give you a great example right now, actually, that's down south, cause we grew up with it. You know, you have the imaginary school district lines between District Three and then Fountain Ford Carson. Right? Fountain Ford Carson is a massive, brand-new football stadium. Every kid, uh, you know, has access to everything they pretty much want, laptops, the, they're able to attract top-tier teachers. Um, but then you go across, and they get massive amounts of military impact funding in the federal government, that allows them to do things. But then you go across imaginary line, and then you're in School District Three, they don't get nearly the impact funding that Fountain does. But it's, it's full of, of soldiers and their families. Both communities up. So, why is there such a disparity? Yeah, and if you go down there and you get, you know, grew up with it, you can see it.
I mean, it's the same with District Twenty, too, I mean. So, we're about to wrap up, it looks like. Since we asked Richard Skorman the same question since he was a small business owner. Would you support your workers' unionizing if they came to you with a unionization?
I think workers, I think workers have that right. They have the right, just the same as a big company has an HR department, that lobbies for them. Workers can, should be able to come together and lobby on their, on their own behalf. So, yeah, I support it.
As one of those groups, alright, that's good.
Cause if you did, man, I was gonna go off, man. You know, it doesn't work, it never works, it, you know, well, as long, if the workers accept it, it works, but you, like, you know, we, at the Wild Goose here, we, they pro, they proved that they don't have to accept that shit, and, um, you know, again, like, yeah, so, it's, it's the powers in the people, man.
It always is.
Yeah, as long as you do that, then it'll be good stuff, man, it'll be good. Uh, it's cool, man, I think I'm good, I, 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 you know, I don't.
I'll tell you, though, just, you know, from a business owner standpoint, and ha, and having employees, the largest, the single most attractive thing in this country that holds back wages, real progress for workers, is our healthcare system. I, as a business owner, I cannot afford, I cannot afford to pay people enough to keep up with an eight to ten percent increase in healthcare costs every year. I can't do it.
So, I take it that you, uh, you support Medicaid for all, or Medicare for all?
The money's not there. Yeah, it's, I'd support something different than our current system. I, I would like to see healthcare in this country socialized. I would.
Yeah, definitely, I mean.
I would, and that's not.
You lose your job, you lose your healthcare.
At least, at least some kind of hybrid system, where, you know, especially, you know, especially the, the, there's a tier of Americans that don't, they can't afford healthcare, forgive them, it's not even an option for them. And unfortunately, that tier is getting huge everywhere. And so, you know, even some kind of hybrid system where we're making sure the people that can't afford it get taken care of, they have access to healthcare, period, end of story. Not access to insurance, access to healthcare.
Yeah, because.
Okay, you have access to insurance, big deal, now I gotta pay my premium plus or deductibles, I can't afford it, period.
Yeah, that, that, just, there's a saying that people are hearing now a lot, that vaccines aren't carrying things, the vaccination is carrying things. You know, like, the vaccine, they do a shit for sitting in the refrigerator. Somebody there is not doing shit, so, yeah, man, I, I'm with it, man, that, um.
Obviously, that's a city issue, but.
You know, that, we don't, in, in Colorado Springs, we don't need to wait for the federal government to be at bar citizens. We can, the, the city council can say, hey, we're, we're, let's, we're gonna fix this on this next round, on April sixth, we're gonna start, you know what I'm saying? You know, that'd be awesome if one of you guys.
I mean, and that's what I'd like to see, the city council actually thinking a little bit, and saying, we wanna, we wanna solve the problems. Instead of, you know, saying like, this is, this is the, the design that we have here.
You need the, you need the energy and, and fresh faces and.
I'll, I'll, I'll move to the first district involved for you next week.
Good luck finding housing. And I'm, I'm happy to spend more minutes, more time if there's good questions coming in.
Um, yeah, let me see, um, they don't have, Mike said they don't have enough power to stop it, I'm not, oh, the live video stopped.
Oh, well, okay. Yeah, maybe, I don't know, so.
Alright, well, thanks.
I don't know why it stopped.
Yeah, I don't know what, what happened, yeah, we didn't even get the last connection.
Okay, well, bye, everybody.